All right, and good evening. Welcome to the March 28th, 2024 regular meeting of the Xenia City Council. At this time, we will have an invocation led by Pastor Albert Refit from Victory Life Christian Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a scout here named Charlotte Howard. She'll be leading that Pledge of Allegiance, and she's earning her citizenship community badge, so thank you for being here. Pastor?
Thank you, sir. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the sunshine today and your blessings. And Lord, we just ask your blessing tonight upon this meeting. We thank you, God, for every one of these city workers here tonight, Lord, the city council, or mayor, others representing the government of the city. We invoke your blessing, Father. We ask you to give them divine favor, give them discretion in the business that they transact continuously on our behalf. Father, we ask that you continue to lead our city in a path of prosperity. And Father, we just ask that you give them grace for the responsibilities that they carry, and we just thank you for your goodness that we see throughout our city. And Father, we're mindful tonight of our other public servants that are on duty, the fire and EMS, police, sheriff's department, all of these public servants. We pray over them tonight, God. We ask that the angels of the Lord keep them safe and keep them from harm. In Jesus' name, and amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we'll have Charlotte Howard come forward to the podium, and if you could all turn to the flag, you can lead us anytime.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Refit, and thank you, Scout Howard. At this time, I'm going to open up our meeting and ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Smith?
Here.
Councilman Crawford?
Here.
Councilwoman Seres?
Here.
Councilman Reynolds?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mays?
Here.
President Urschel?
All right. President Urschel is away today. I'll be leading the meeting in his absence. Could I get a motion to excuse the president for tonight's meeting?
I move to excuse President Urschel.
Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seres. Any comments or questions? Get a roll call to accept that, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Also, tonight, in absence is our law director doing some fault for a medical reason.
Recovery.
She emailed me, asked for her excuse, so I gave it to her. So we're going to move on to approval of minutes, and before us is the minutes from the March 14th, 2024 regular meeting. At this time, I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the minutes.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
No.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilman Crawford. Is there any corrections, additions, omissions need to be made to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll get a roll call to accept those, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is special presentations. We have none scheduled for tonight, so that moves us directly into audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting where anyone in the audience is welcome to come to the podium at this time. If you could give us your name and address for the record. This is fine right here.
I invited her sitting me.
Oh, cool. Okay, great.
Unless you want her to come speak.
Do you want to just introduce yourself on camera?
Okay.
We're not calling you out or anything.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Howard. I'm from Troop 68. I'm here getting my citizenship in community merit badge.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate that. Also, anyone else in the audience here to come forward at this time? If you could just give us your name and address for the record, leave me your comments two to three minutes, please. Okay.
Mike Cammer. I'm from Springfield, Ohio, and I've appeared before you before on the issue of the bike path. And as I drove by the other day, hoping to see something happening, I haven't seen anything happen yet, and I was wondering, do you guys, when you have hazardous conditions, do you apply a RAC code to it where you say, you know, the chance of this happening is this big, but the consequence is this small, or vice versa? Kind of like that bridge that went down in Baltimore? They thought it would never happen, so they didn't build a, you know, an island around it. Because I haven't seen anything done, and I'm just kind of, you know, the person that appears, the wheel that squeaks gets the oil, and I'm afraid I might have to be the wheel. So if you guys have any information that you can share with me, I would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. All right. We may have a report on that later.
Yeah. The solution is in the works, but I don't have an exact timeline on it.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Anyone else here to come forward at this time? All right. We're going to move on to old business. Our first and only item in old business is a public hearing. This is ordinance 2024-05. And before we do the introduction, this is amending section 214.01 of the city's legislative code. We'll turn this over to the city manager first for a quick overview.
Yes, Councilor Call, this is a language that, an ordinance that would amend our code that would increase our current bid threshold from the current amount of $50,000 to $75,000. This would bring this into alignment with what the state of Ohio has adopted for state, for any statutory authorities, and would also incorporate a 3% annual automatic increase on that amount to keep up with inflation. This, of course, would also, as part of this, amend those items that would need to come back to council, so we would have administratively the ability to approve up to that same amount. So again, this would help us align with what the state currently has established as its standard.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for city manager on this ordinance? If not, this was originally introduced by Councilman Reynolds at our last meeting.
Yeah. What Brian said is true. I historically would be opposed to something like this, but this is something that's very important, I think, because the purchasing power is not what it used to be. You know, $50,000 is not even comparable to what it was about five years ago. So I think it's very important legislation that we pass this. You know, if something breaks, instead of coming to council for an emergency, you know, we'll have the authority to go through with that, so.
All right. Thank you. So you move for passage then?
Oh, I moved for passage.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a second on this?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. If not, we're going to open the public hearing and ask anyone in the audience who would care to come forward and speak in favor or against ordinance 2024-05. All right. We have no one come forward to close that public hearing on this, and we have a first and a second, so we'll go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business. Our first item under old, new business tonight is an emergency. This is ordinance 2024-06. This is amending ordinance 2024-03, which was providing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Xenia for our fiscal year ending December 31st of 2024. We are declaring this as an emergency, and we'll turn this over to Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. There are a number of items to be presented to council tonight related to the award bids that we recently received back. Please report that many of those bids came back well under what was budgeted and what was estimated, so that's a very good thing. There was one of the projects, the country club waterline replacement, where there is a need for an additional appropriation, and the reason for that is not that it came in overbid, but rather that the ratio between the grant funding and the city local match, we did not have that correct in the budget, and so we need to budget an additional $105,46 to fund that project that will be presented to council here later this evening. The water fund is in good stead financially and can support this additional appropriation that's being requested tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duke. Any questions for our finance director tonight? All right. At this time, I'll seek a motion to approve as an emergency.
Mr. President, I move without ordinance 24, 2024-06.
Thank you. Moved by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dean. Any questions or concerns? All right. This time, we'll go ahead and seek a roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Thanks. Our next item under new business is ordinance 2024-07, which we'll seek an introduction tonight. This is going to amend the official zoning map of the city of Xenia to rezone property located at 130 East Church Street from P1 public and institutional district to the B1 convenience business district, and to rezone the property at 194 East Church Street from R1C, a one-family residential district to a B1 convenience business district. So at this time, we'll turn this over to Mr. Mayor Mays for explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. On March 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing and subsequently voted to recommend the rezoning of four parcels. As indicated, these are addressed at 130 and 194 East Church Street. These actions came at the recommendation of city staff. With the recent sale of the property at 130 East Church Street, the new owners are requesting a rezoning of the property to accommodate its intended reuse as a commercial site for research and development. The site is currently zoned P1, and given this, such use would not be permitted. However, research and development would be permitted as a conditional use under a B1 zoning designation, which is the change that is being requested in this particular case. Additionally, O'Neill's Catering LLC intends to renovate the former Carnegie Library at 194 East Church Street and convert this to a restaurant and catering business. The business and its, excuse me, the business is not permitted under its current zoning of R1C, but would be a principal permitted use under the proposed B1 zoning. The proposed B1 district will not only accommodate these proposed uses, but it really is a more compatible use with the properties that surround the residential neighborhood and some of the other institutional on the opposite side. The city staff is supportive of the proposed projects at both of these sites, and we are endorsing this change, so we are asking the council introduce this ordinance this evening, bring it for consideration, and ultimately approve the rezoning.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. City manager, Mayor Mays, we appreciate that. Anyone have any questions for him at this time?
I do have one question. In terms of the parking lot, what are the, what's the vision for the parking lot?
Parking lot will remain at the city parking.
Okay.
That is essential for our justice center, for our police and communications staff that work at the justice center.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone care to introduce that? Thank you. Councilman Reynolds, have his hand up there quick. Thank you, sir. Our next item is resolution 2024-015. This is a warning of bid authorizing execution of a contract with Kennison Excavating for the 2024 Country Club Drive Water Main Project. And this goes back to Mr. Mayor Mays.
Thank you, sir. This is the first of multiple awards of bid this evening for a lot of projects that have kept our engineering staff and our construction inspection staff very busy and will keep them very busy through this year. In July of 2022, the city applied for and received state grant funds through the Ohio Public Works Commission to rehabilitate the infrastructure along Country Club Drive from North Detroit Street to Eagles Way. There are two aspects of the intended work. This includes the replacement and upsizing of approximately 3,900 linear feet of water main from a 10-inch pipe to a 12-inch pipe, and second, the rehabilitation of the roadway over the entire length of this section of road from curb to curb. The engineer's estimate for the combined project was $1.9 million, just over $1.9 million. Of this, OPWC awarded the city a $600,000 grant, which covers 31% of the total. As a result, the city's 69% share of the project would be $1,333,623. Please remember that per our capital plan, this project is being split into two phases, so we will commence with the first phase, which is the water main upsizing and replacement in 2024, and that second phase with the street rehabilitation will commence in 2025. This is a pretty invasive project, so there obviously will be some interruption to, a significant interruption of traffic flow on the roadway. We'll take an extended period of time to finish this. As the respective split on the engineer's estimate for each phase was $1.249,210, the, I should say, the split for the water main portion of the work was $1.249,210, $684.40, oh my goodness, $684,413. Too many numbers for the street rehab portion. Again, this evening's recommended action on the item is only for the bid solicitation associated with the water main work. We did open bids on March 1st. The city received four bids from prospective contractors to complete this replacement and upsizing of the existing water main. Based on submittals, the low bidder was M&amp;T Excavating Incorporated, which has no previous work history with the city. As a result, our staff conducted a reference check and found that water-related projects for which M&amp;T Excavating was providing references were very limited in terms of projects of this nature and of this size. The only projects of similar magnitude and size and cost were with the city of Huber Heights. The other project examples that were submitted were a significantly smaller scope. The engineering division then contacted several of the references listed for similar types of projects, and the feedback we received did raise some concerns. So staff conducted some supplemental research into the company's past work performance and discovered some other concerning items. The results of the reference checks combined with the notable disparity in bid amounts did raise some reasonable questions about the vendor's ability to perform acceptable work at or under budget. By charter and statutory authority, the city does reserve the right to award bids based on lowest and best bid submitted, and we require that all bidders furnish satisfactory evidence that they can fulfill the conditions of the contract, that they have sufficient experience, and have a satisfactory record of integrity and of work performance. Based on the staff's research and the references we've received, this is the staff's position that in this particular case, the low bid is not necessarily the best bid. And as such, moving forward with an award to this vendor may compromise the quality and ultimately the cost effectiveness of this particular project. In light of this, we are recommending that council find the next lowest bid submitted by Kennison Excavating Incorporated to be the lowest and best. Kennison has completed several of the projects of this type for the city. They've got a proven track record of excellent performance. Kennison's bid of $1,203,690 is under the engineer's estimate as presented. We're recommending council award the bid to Kennison Excavating and authorize the execution of the contract to perform that work at the price that they have indicated. Council will recall that we ran into some issues with a low bidder last year on the work on Second Street, and that has made us, I think, even more judicious as we look to award high-dollar, large-scale projects to make sure that we are getting the best value for the city, which sometimes means ensuring you're getting, you're getting good quality work. So this is a little bit out of our typical routine, and I think you, because of that, you know that we proceed to make this recommendation with caution. So we feel that this is what's in the city's best interest and would recommend that you move forward with the ordinance as such.
All right. Any questions for our city manager?
I have one question.
Yes. We'll start with Councilman Reynolds, and then I'll come back to you.
My question is on the pipe, increasing it to 12 inches. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah. We've, that was originally stalled at a point where there's much less development. That line actually runs all the way to Central State. It's probably connecting line to Central State. In fact, the balance of that line is not, is not actually city-owned property, it's state-owned property. It needs to be replaced all the way out to the Wilberforce area. So based on our hydraulic studies that we've had done, that is appropriate, not only to replace it, but as we're replacing and upsizing it to ensure there's plenty of capacity for the future.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And my question was just answered. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Not seeing any other questions. Who would like to make the motion to award the bid to Kennison?
Senator.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Seres. We have no other additional questions. We'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is resolution 2024-016. This is a warning of bid and authorizing execution of contract with John R. Jurgensen Company for the 2024 street paving program. And we'll turn this over to Mr. Mayor Mays as well.
Thank you, sir. The city's annual street rehab program includes considerations certainly for roadway paving, but also improvements such as ADA ramp replacements that are needed prior to future roadway projects and curb and other concrete work as necessary that would be accessory work to paving that we are undertaking. As planned in our CIP and as provided for in the 2024 appropriations ordinance, the city's 2024 annual street program included East Second Street resurfacing from Col- South Columbus Street to South Patton Street, East Church Street ADA ramp replacements and Corwin, from Corwin Avenue to North Monroe Drive, and curb and asphalt improvements at the Ford Road and Glady Run wastewater treatment plants. Additionally, city council instructed staff to evaluate options for additional neighborhood street rehab with any supplementary resources that might be brought to bear. Staff then recommended to council that directing some capital reserves, reserve funds as a one-time funding source expectation could be accommodated and subsequently recommended road rehab work that could be added to this list in the right cycle estates. This was selected primarily because those roads would be mill and fill-related activities, which are really some of our most cost-effective road treatments available to us. Given the factors presented, engineering staff solicited bids for the related projects on Second and Church and at the water plants, and then included right cycle estates, the engineer estimate for the total program, which was the base bid plus all of the alternates, was $2,267,022.50. On Friday, March 1st, the city received three bids from qualified contractors to complete this program. At $1,915,915.50, John R. Jurgensen Company provided the lowest bid, and the firm has successfully completed numerous similar projects for the city as well as for regional jurisdictions over many years, so they're clearly lowest and best. Staff is recommending award a bid with the contractor and request approval to execute a contract to complete this work this summer.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. I'll open this up for questions. Any questions? I know we've discussed this in our work session. All right. So it is a little daunting for citizens to understand why streets are selected in the order that they are. This is a case where we're actually trying to get as much paving for a dollar as possible than do in the mill and fill at right cycle estates, because those streets are actually still salvageable without going under the, into the base.
Yeah.
Am I correct there?
And additionally, that's all newer water and sewer infrastructure, so there, it's under less risk of having to tear new roadway up or the newly milled and filled roadway to repair that. So again, we look at multiple factors, the total cost, the cost effectiveness of the treatment, those buried infrastructure elements. So this investment will take those dollars a lot further in terms of the total lane miles we can pay.
All right. Thank you. And if you're watching this and if we're going on record, this is probably the most we've done in a few years.
Yeah, especially when you combine the other projects we're awarding tonight with grant funds. There will be lots of construction underway in the city.
So we know there's a lot of streets, majority of them need work, but this is going to take some time and appreciate people's patience. So who would like to make the motion on this? Moved by Councilman Dean and seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Do we have any other discussion? All right. This time, we'll ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Seres?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is-
Mayor Mays?
I thought, I thought she passed. I just thought she was real quiet. I missed it.
Aye.
All right. All right. Your vote is important, Mayor Mays. Thank you. All right. Our next item is resolution 2024-17. This is a warning of bid and authorizing execution of a contract also with John R. Jurgensen Company for the U.S. Route 42 Industrial Boulevard to City Corp limit resurfacing project. So we'll turn this back over to Mr. Mayor Mays for a brief explanation of this.
Thank you again, sir. In December of 2020, the city received federal urban resurfacing program funds from the Ohio Department of Transportation for the U.S. 42 resurfacing project, which would rehab roadway again from Industrial Boulevard to the city corp limits in that area of town. The urban resurfacing program through ODOT funds up to 80% of the cost to mill and resurface, along with any associated roadway striping for projects on state and U.S. routes. Based on the engineer's estimate of the total cost, ODOT will fund up to a maximum of $556,000 on this particular project. All other costs are responsible, are the responsibility of the city. Again, on Friday, March 1st, the city accepted bids, opened bids from qualified contractors. We received three of them of the bids submitted. John R. Jurgensen Company was the low bidder at $679,509.09. Again, they have an exemplary reputation, a lot of history with the city, so we do find them to be lowest and best. Staff is recommending that John R. Jurgensen be awarded the bid and that council authorize us to move forward with the contract to that effect.
All right. Thank you. This time, I'll open up the floor. Any questions for Mr. Mayor Mays?
Mr. Mayor Mays, I do have one question. I know we brought up the engineering estimates. I was curious, were those done in the 2020 cycle, or were those done more recently, those estimates?
Originally in the 2020, yeah. Yeah. And then, and that's where you will see sometimes, and this happened actually, I think, about a year, two years ago, we had done a number of estimates based on really the effective costs prior to the superinflation we've experienced the last couple of years, and we had to actually supplement with quite a bit of additional city dollars in projects back around 2021. So yeah, that, it can, it can have an impact if you do see high inflationary rates over a short period of time, because these grants typically, you're applying in a year, and it might be three to five years, depending on the program, before you would actually see dollars, so.
So the, so the application accompanies the award for the, for the grants?
Yeah. We submit the engineering report. The determination is made at that time based on those numbers. Now, again, there are times, given different state programs, where the state may have additional monies to help offset any increase, but typically, the city will be responsible for that increased cost.
Thank you.
All right, does that answer your question?
It does.
All right, anyone else have questions? All right, if not, we'll seek a motion to award the bid.
I move to award the bid to...
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Councilman Reynolds, followed by a second by Councilwoman Cerise. If there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and move for roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, you got in there on that one. That's awesome. All right, our next, our next item is Resolution 2024-18. This is also a warning to bid and authorizing execution of a contract, again with John R. Jurgensen Company, for the East Market Street. That is from North Detroit Street to North Columbus Street, and that's a resurfacing project as well. Mr. Mayorman, would you care? And I'd also like to, for the record, let people know, our, our public service director and engineer Chris Berger is here with us tonight. Do you want to add anything that's been said? Are you good? Okay, thanks for being here, I appreciate it. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman.
Yeah, thank you. In October 2021, the city applied for and received federal surface transportation programming funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for the East Market Street resurfacing project. This includes rehab work on Market from Detroit to North Columbus Street. In addition to the sorely needed rehabilitation and reconstruction of this section of Market Street, there will be significant improvements to curbing and adjacent sidewalks along this stretch of roadway. This has a lot of public use, given all the institutional uses nearby, and no one would argue that this is not in desperate need of rehabilitation. So we are excited to be able to move forward with this. The ADA ramps along this section were previously replaced last year in anticipation of this project, so that, that all has already been completed. Similar to past STP applications, the approved grant application requires a split of 69% federal funding and 31% local match funding. On the engineer's estimate for the project was $727,556.80. On Friday, March 1st, the city received three bids from qualified contractors for this project as well. At $473,610.27, the bid from John R. Jurgensen was the lowest. Again, they have an excellent reputation, and we view them to be the lowest and best here. The firm has successfully completed a lot of projects for us. Obviously, they'll be doing several projects this year. So we are requesting authorization to award this bid and execute a contract for completion of this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. I'll open up the floor for any questions.
Are they being, I'm concerned about all the construction right now with the library, that we do not pave the road while there's all the construction happening?
Yeah, there's, well, there's still, in addition to, because I think they're doing some gas work, the library work, we also have the security bump out that's being done on the Justice Center. Engineering has been in coordination with all these different elements to make sure that we'll time it. There obviously has been and will continue to be an interruption to both vehicular and pedestrian traffic flow. It's unavoidable here, but we are working to coordinate among these different projects to minimize the...
I'm not worried about the traffic flow, I'm just concerned that we don't pave something that then gets destroyed because we do the security bump out.
Right, yeah, yeah. We've had that very conversation to make sure that all the rest of this work is getting out and done out in front, that we're not tearing anything up that, you know, is brand-new infrastructure. So this'll, this'll be an amazing difference once it's done, but obviously we don't want to rip anything up that's, that's brand-new.
Thank you.
All right, who else has questions? So with this passage, I count on my calculator, we're shy over just a little more than $3 million in street repair.
At least, yeah.
Is that correct, Mr. Duke?
Based on...
Yeah, I think it's actually, I think it's actually...
More, yeah, if you look at the, with the grant funds as well, yeah, yeah. It's going to be a very, very busy summer for our engineering and construction inspection.
Mayor Mayes, do you have something else?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know that it's been brought up that I live on the street, that this is not, that's something that I've stayed from when we originally talked about the project. This is just accepting the award of the bid, so I wanted to note that.
You're, you're good, whatever you want to do tonight. Yep, all right.
It's obviously in need of immediate attention, so...
All right, so at this time I'll entertain a motion to accept the bid.
I make a motion to accept the bid for the Resolution of 2024-1, I mean, 018.
Thank you, moved by Councilman Crawford. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Dean, thank you. This time I'll go ahead and ask for roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye. And while we have our public service manager and engineer here, I have a question for you. So there's a lot of activity at, like Monroe and NE, a lot of little utility flags, and what's going on there? Do you, do you have time to enlighten us on that?
Sure, that's all, that's all Centerpoint Energy. They're subcontractors who are doing that for them. They've been concentrating pretty much in that area, geez, probably the last four years. So the Sutton Edison area, Monroe...
Okay, that's what I figured.
Yeah, and just to let you... They're wired under, their licensing under PUCO to have systematic rehabilitation, replacement of their infrastructure there. So they're replacing some pretty old gas lines, and they're methodically going through the city, different neighborhoods over a multi-year plan to replace all that.
Yeah, and as a side note, the work that the mayor just brought up there on, on Market Street, they weren't intending to do that until, I think, two more years down the road, but then when we met with them and said, hey, we got this, we got this grant project, they actually, to their credit, put that at the top of the list. So that's why they're doing it ahead of time. In relation to the street work, I did a quick calculation. As far as the work on public roads this year, there's about $2.9 million bucks. It's about 3.8 miles of roadway.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Berger, can Councilman Crawford ask you a question?
Yes, does that, is that infrastructure mean for improvements for dwellings as well, moving the meters to the outside, improving those meters?
No, it doesn't, not on this project. You talk about the road projects, you mean?
No, the gas lines.
Oh, yeah, no, that I don't, I, they will do that Centerpoint well for, for the customers right there. It's nothing we're doing, that's what I'm struggling with, that's all through them.
Yeah, I think this is all just individual pipeline replacement and residential labor codes.
Yeah, but they will replace the service lines, they'll stub those out as they go along putting the new main in.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we got that moved, right? Okay, so, lost it. So our next item is Resolution 2024-019. This is determining certain city-owned properties that are no longer needed for municipal purposes, and we're authorizing our city manager to use negotiations or informal competition for the lease of those said properties for agricultural use. So, Mr. Mayorman, would you explain that for us?
Yes, thank you, sir. By city charter, any changes in disposition of city-owned property require council action. Given this, staff recommends council determine that two properties are not needed for, needed for any municipal purpose, and thus provide for leasing of these properties for private use. These properties are listed by parcel in your agenda report but are generally recognizable as vacant land on north of the Woodland Cemetery off of Tyler Road, adjacent to the city's former landfill, and then also vacant land immediately adjacent to the Glady Run wastewater treatment plant, Lower Bel- Belbrook Avenue. If so designated by council, the intent would be to continue to lease these fields for farm use but retain ownership of the properties. Disposition of these two city-owned properties was discussed with the Property Management Committee at its meeting on March 14th. The committee recommended that council find they are not needed for any municipal use and then authorize staff to negotiate these leases. And again, our intent would be they would continue as an agricultural purpose. The leases themselves will have to be presented to council for approval as required by charter. So once we have those arrangements negotiated, we will be back for further action with council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayorman. I'll open up the floor, any questions? We'll talk about this, too. All right, if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution to sell these properties.
Sold.
Thank you, moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. And at this time we'll ask for roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cerise?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a formative officials report. We'll start with Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to remind everybody, there's about two and a half weeks left to file your taxes. It is filing deadline of April 15th this year, which is actually the first time in many years that the deadline has fallen on April 15th. It seemed like that was always the deadline, but the last several years it's actually been delayed because of Emancipation Day in Washington, D.C. But the deadline is April 15th this year. Please don't forget to file city taxes. The city, or Rita, who contracts with the city to provide that service, has a nice website where people can file their taxes online. They can also come in to this building, 107 East Main Street, and file your taxes here at the city building. Rita has an office here in this building and will help people and answer any questions they may have in filing those city tax returns. So that's all I have this evening.
All right, thank you. Anything for Mr. Duke tonight?
Just to piggyback off of Rita, they'll actually like handle your W-2, and they're like, all right, they fill it all out, and they're like, here you go, sign this. It's very simple, so...
Yep, they, they'll, they'll do all the, all the work for you.
Yeah, all I do is sign my name.
I wish they did corporate returns, so...
So, and that brings me to my question, Mr. Duke. On, on commercial filing or business filings, for those extensions, what's the proper extension process?
Yeah, so if you file a federal extension, then you are automatically, you're automatically extended with the city as well. So you don't have to file an additional document. We accept that federal extension. We don't do any, any follow-up on returns that are missing until after that federal deadline. So if you provide a copy of your federal extension when you file your taxes with the city, that, that will suffice.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
How long is the extension for?
Just curious.
It's, I don't actually know the, the date, but I think it's September, somewhere in that neighborhood.
All right, thank you. If there's, anyone else have anything for Mr. Duke? Thank you. In absence of our law director, if she has anything to cover, I guess she'll take care of that. But we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to our city manager, Mr. Mayorman. Also like to thank our assistant city manager, Mr. Halloway, you're in the audience tonight, thank you. And our, and our police chief, thank you for your protection. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to Mr. Manager.
Just two items to note this evening. First, next week, April 3rd, Wednesday next week, is the 50th anniversary of the super outbreak of tornadoes that, of course, deeply impacted this community. We have been in the process of, of taking some steps to memorialize this rather significant anniversary. We have, I think just today, completed and uploaded to YouTube a really good video documentary piece telling just a couple of the stories from that particular event. And I thank Christina Schaefer, our public relations coordinator, for putting together a very, very, very good video piece that, again, just tells a little bit of that story. On April 3rd next week, we will host downtown a celebration of the resiliency of the community, honoring those that lost lives and really reflecting back on the contributions of everyone who went through that and survived it and then helped to rebuild our community. So we'll be gathering in the block downtown on Main Street, just south of the courthouse, for a series of speakers. This will be a fairly brief event, looking at around 30 to 45 minutes, some unpredictability with weather that time of year. So we will have a tent with some limited seating. We obviously can't make accommodations for everyone, but we will have some limited seating. So I believe we will have the governor there, we have some officials from the National Weather Service, we have the Ray Patterson Air Force Band of Flight will be providing some services as well. Mayor is participating. So again, we invite the public to come out and celebrate the fact that Xenia has lived on and that we are thriving. So we encourage folks to, to join us. We will be closing this facility a little early that day at 4:00, so that our folks here can participate. Additionally, on April 8th is a total solar eclipse. We've had some discussion with council about this. I just want to remind folks that we will be closing our administrative offices at noon on that day, just to allow our staff to get home safely in what could be some congested traffic. So again, we will be closed a little early on April 8th, and that is all I have this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Mayorman? All right, we're going to move on to council comments and reports. We'll start tonight with Councilwoman Cerise.
I don't have any reports, but I did want to say that this week I did do a ride-along with the police department with Officer Corey Farrar. We rode around together for about six hours on her quote beat. She was, she's a newer officer. She first worked as a dispatcher, so it made it quite an easy transition over to be an officer because she was very well-equipped on the radio, did an excellent job. We didn't have anything too exciting happening, which is great, but we did have some, noticed some interpersonal issues with some residents, and she handled everything very well. Another officer showed up every time that we arrived at a situation. They worked in tandem with each other, were exceptional. I was highly impressed, did a great job with the needs of our community. We have some unique needs and challenges, a lot of issues with folks, and they were exceptional in every situation. I was very proud of them. So I learned a lot, and I was very, I was really happy to have done that. So thank you for your guidance, obviously, you're doing a fine job, so I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Cerise. Councilman Crawford?
Maybe one item, just to say that I did get a chance to tour the Xenia shoe and leather, the apartments that were actually being installed to the upper two floors. Impressive work, the design looks great. It's, it's going to be an exciting project, and whoever gets the chance to live there is going to be phenomenal experience for anyone living there. They're about, they're projecting, I think, midsummer to be complete. That may be a bit aggressive, but anyway, just, just really appreciate that, that forward moving because I'm getting some questions about maybe some of the other projects that could go on similar to that in Xenia. So, and just being a voice and a recommendation for that, I counted it an honor, and, and great to be a part of this growth in our, in our community today with that.
All right, thank you, Councilman Crawford. Then we'll go on to Councilman Reynolds.
So the budget committee meets next week on...
The 4th.
The 4th, thank you. Sorry, I don't remember.
Fourth.
Day, on the 4th, reverse of comments. I'm pretty excited to be downtown for the ceremony for the tornado. I'm not originally from Xenia, but, you know, moving here, everyone that has been here for many years, it's, it's something that everyone talks about, something that everyone knows about, and you're like, oh, I live near, day into the, you know, east, and like, oh, where, like, oh, Xenia, everyone knows where it's at. So I'm happy to see the city, you know, making its way again, you know, $3 million in road repairs coming this year, so it's exciting times for our city. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Did you have an update about the crossing? Were we talking about that later?
Yeah, we, yeah, I can just mention a little more detail. We do have some fixes in mind, working that into the schedule with our crews, so I don't have a specific date, we won't have that, but, but we are looking at improvements at that location, and I think a couple of the other bike crossings where we'll take some steps to address some safety concerns. There's some legitimate concerns and some minor fixes I think can really improve that.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. Not as much to report, I was out of town for about a week, so did not get to go to as many events, but wanted to mention that on Saturday, March 16th, they attended, as well as Councilman Dean, the Tecumseh Territories Chapter National Wild Turkey Federation Dinner at the Fairgrounds, so that's held here in Xenia, and quite a few folks come out for that. So wanted to thank them for their hospitality. On Monday, March 18th, participated with the Xenia Police Force for the, with the Accreditation Agency, Kalia, and had an opportunity to interview with two of the folks that came out and had a great conversation with them. On Wednesday, March 27th, I spoke at Cedar Valley University to their government class with Dr. Patrick Oliver. Just had a lot of really good discussion with students about their involvement in local government and what that might look like in their future. So great questions, they had a lot of great questions about not just local government, but the city and ways to be involved and volunteer here, so it's very exciting. A couple of things that I wanted to remind people, that this Saturday is the Easter Egg Hunt, the Community Easter Egg Hunt at the Shawnee Park. So if you're interested in volunteering, I'd ask people to come out at 9:00 a.m. to volunteer. We could definitely use a few more volunteers, a few more hands on deck. So Shawnee Park, 9:00 a.m., we'll get things set up. Registration, if you want to register for a raffle Easter basket, you can come at 10:00 a.m., that's when the registration opens. And again, if you want to donate a basket, you can drop that off here at the city building or at a Mano Baptist Church, or bring it that morning to the park. And then 10:30 is the helicopter egg drop, and then at 11:00 a.m., we will have five different egg hunts at staggered times. They will not be all at once, five different groups. We've got a special hunt for kids with unique needs. We have a hunt for babies, for toddlers, for five to eight-year-olds, and nine to 12-year-olds. So we make sure that we stagger those out, and then after that, we will be, have the opportunity to raffle off baskets, and Shane from Walmart has graciously donated bikes for a grand prize. So it'll be a fun morning, and it's, the Easter Bunny will be there, you can come and take pictures for free, so it's a great time to come out and see people in your community. A lot of our churches are going to be involved and have giveaways. I also wanted to mention, April 6th is going to be a cleanup day for the city. Keith Cook has been very helpful in putting some areas together that might need cleaned up. We, the X-Rap team is going to be here and helping to send people out. They will have trash bags available, gloves, trash pickers, places where you can leave your trash bags, and we'll send you out. The next day, April 7th, is the Xenia Marathon, which is a Boston Marathon qualifier, so we really want to make sure that we spend some time on the 6th, doing some cleanup around town. There's quite a few areas that, especially in the spring, storms come and go and the trash blows around, we have some very specific areas that we would like to address. So if you are available to come out, bring an organization, bring your friends, bring your Sunday School class, whatever that might look like, bring your scouting group. So that'll be on Saturday, April 6th at 9:00 AM. If you have, we will be putting some information out, I believe, on social media, hopefully about that, so if there are questions, you can follow up with myself or someone in the city. And I just wanted to mention that I, Easter on Sunday, I do hope people take time to go to one of our many great churches here in this community. We have a lot of great churches that work together, do a lot for this community, and Easter is a great time to visit a church, so please go out and celebrate Easter well and the resurrection of our Lord. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. That had been on April 6th, where are you meeting at?
Here, for April 6th, meet here at the city building at 9:00 AM. We'll just do 9:00 AM to probably about 11:00 or 12:00. The goal is night, is 9:00 to 12:00, but depending on the day, depending on the weather, who knows?
Right, thank you. And the Easter Egg Hunt, is rain or shine?
Rain or shine, come on out. Dress for the weather, because you never know.
So just a couple of things, after my comments, we are gonna move into an executive session, so just be aware of that. I did want to make a couple of comments. There, there is discussion on social media about the Pancake Day being canceled by the Xenia Rotary. That was not the city that did not cancel that event. That, that was canceled by the Rotary due to lack of participation, actually, over this, since COVID, they've had even lower attendance than before. I remember when that used to be at Better Field House and, and then they moved it kind of to fairgrounds and and I, it's just, it, it's disappointing, it's, it's canceled, but that's their decision and that was a volunteer organization. They really didn't make much money off of that because they opened it up and made it free and everybody likes free food, so I'll leave it at that. Couple more things here, I, I would like to thank the citizens that were able to vote. I would like to thank those that participated in the voting for our Safety Services levy that did go down, so we are a little disappointed in that. However, we understand, we get it, there's a lot of financial challenges right now, a lot of economic hardship. Property values have gone up quite a bit, so your taxes went up, we get it, we understand. So we'll, we'll regroup and figure out a best way of moving forward from a leadership perspective on that. Also, with the election, I'd like to congratulate two people that are actually sitting up here tonight. First, Councilman Dean, who won his primary bid for state legislature, so congratulations on that. And also congratulate our own mayor, Mayor Mays, who won her primary bid for county commission. So thank you very much. And I know you have an election in November, Councilman Dean, right, for a general election, but Mayor Mays, you do not have an opponent, is that correct?
I do not have an opponent, no.
Okay, unless somebody wants to just throw their name, no, I'm just kidding.
Deadline pass.
Funny, not funny.
No, I, I know you both work very hard and congratulations on that. We know you're gonna do great things. So next, per Ohio revised code 121.22 ORC, I will make a motion for us to move into executive session. This is for the purchase or sale of property and a request for economic development assistance. So for those that are in the audience, we do not anticipate any legislative action after the outcome of that executive meeting, so we are going to take just a short, very, very short recess due to time, some of us have some other obligations tonight, but at this time, we'll go to recess.
Vice President?
You want to move to the executive?
Vice President?
Correct.
May I ask, would somebody be able to address Mr. Hammer about...
He did.
Did he, did you do?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
That's okay, yeah. Did you get that, your, your concerns were addressed?
Yeah, you know, I'm just kind of wondering if there's, you know, is it gonna be, you know, the bike season's kicking off, so is it gonna be done, you know, before, you know, May or June? Or are we gonna see it when the snow starts falling again?
Yeah, I really don't have a specific timeline, I'll have to look, but I can get back with council.
Okay, we'll try to have an answer for you. All right, so at this time we're gonna recess briefly and...
We need a, we need a second and a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I made the motion, but we didn't get a second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reynolds. Roll call, please.
Councilman Crawford?
Here? Yes. Yes.
Would you know you're here?
Councilwoman Reese?
Aye.
Councilman Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Vice President Smith?
Aye.